Recording in progress.
Welcome to the City Council's special meeting this Tuesday evening, February 20th. I now call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, I'll call the roll. And Councilmember Hedges?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Here.
Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here. At this time, I will ask our city clerk if any notifications or requests for virtual meeting participation have been received from any members of the council due to just cause or emergency circumstances.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have received a request from Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Lee, will you please address the council?
Good evening. I am home with my daughter as a primary caretaker. She has a contagious illness. So I request to participate virtually. I will stay on camera and with my audio on. There are no adults over 18 years old present in the meeting space with me.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I interject here for a moment?
Yes.
I just want to go through a couple of items that are required to be met in order for Councilmember Lee to participate remotely under AB 2449. One she already mentioned. The other is that I'll just note for the record that a quorum in the council is here physically at council chambers and that this is the first time Councilmember Lee has made this request, so the applicable threshold has not been exceeded. And we are broadcasting on a two-way audiovisual platform so the public can visually observe the meeting. So with those four items, the fourth one being that no individuals over 18 are with her, the council should vote on whether to allow Councilmember Lee to participate remotely based on those four findings.
All right. Do I need to ask for, make a motion in second?
Yes, please.
So who would like to make the motion?
I'll move second.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
And Councilmember Lee abstains.
All right.
Motion carries 4-0, or 4-1.
Thank you very much. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to the city clerk. If participating remotely, please use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, please press *9 to raise your hand, and when called upon, please press *6 to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We will now begin this special meeting with the one item on the agenda, Central Park Master Plan Phase 1 Implementation Status Update, and we will hear from Joanne McGrini, our Parks and Recreation Director. Over to you, Director McGrini.
Thank you. Good evening and honorable mayor. That's okay. Good evening and honorable mayor, members of the city council. My name is Joanne McGrini. I am the Director of Parks and Recreation, and I'm here tonight with a great group of people to provide you a presentation on the Central Park Master Plan Phase 1 Status Update. That also includes the Fallen Heroes Memorial, but we're here just to speak about the playground renovation project as such. And joining me tonight, we have Leif McKay, who is a managing partner at RRM Design Group. And Leif has been working on and involved in this master planning process since the beginning in 2014. We have King Liang, who is our Parks and Recreation Project Manager. And King has been with the city for a little over seven months now and has hit the ground running on these projects. And we also have our Parks and Business Manager Nicholas Shorvus, who's been with the city for over five years. He's extensive knowledge and experience with our in-lu and impact fees. And just to start the presentation off, a little bit of information about this park and a little history. As some of you recall, we had our 100-year celebration in 1922. The purchase of this over 16-acre coal estate made the Central Park the first municipal park in the city. This park borders the downtown as well as El Camino Real, and it is a destination park for residents and visitors of San Mateo. The original master plan was established in 1982, and then as we re-engage the master plan process in 2013, 2014. And I am going to turn it over to Leif from RRM to take us through that process and ultimately the playground design process.
Thanks, Joanne. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Honorable mayor, council members, thank you for having me tonight. My name's Leif McKay. I'm a landscape architect with RRM Design Group. And this marks the 10th year of our engagement on Central Park visioning and design work. We're very honored and feel very privileged to get to participate in such a spectacular park. Before I talk about the playground, I thought it would just be good. I understand that the council has changed considerably since we last came forward with any presentations. And just to go back to the beginning, in 2014, we did a master plan process for the entire park. These are just some photos and a timeline across the bottom. We had extensive community engagement at the time. We met with all sorts of stakeholders, the city's leadership team. We presented alternatives. We did some environmental work. And we ultimately came up with what became the adopted master plan. If you could advance the slides. You may be familiar with this graphic. This represents the culmination of that master plan effort. It was adopted in 2018, so it was a four-year process. Part of the reason it took so long was the extensive community engagement we conducted for this. It was very thorough and robust, and we talked to many, many people along the way that contributed to the vision that is on your screen right here. We, it outlines a long-term vision that at the time was, what we had talked about with staff was it probably would take something like a bond measure or some sort of other financing mechanism to realize this complete build-out. But what we did was, at the time, broke it into four phases that would be smaller bite-sized efforts that we could pick away at over time. Excuse me. The, some of the major features that you see are the, this plaza that kind of connects at Fifth Avenue to downtown. That was a big focus of it, to really bring down the wall that was created by the parking structure and have sort of a community green plaza area. The tennis courts that are there currently are moved to the bottom right. You can see that. And then some other sort of support buildings, a big picnic pavilion in the middle there, number seven, a community event room, number three, and general enhancements of the Fitzgerald Field bleachers and what we're here to talk about tonight, the playground. Next slide, please. The four phases we came up with, we really just wanted to touch on that tonight because they are kind of sequential, even though they have some flexibility built in because you're not ever quite sure when a windfall might come along in the form of a specific grant or something. But generally speaking, the playground and the restroom, which is kind of by necessity because it's part of the playground area, and the picnic area that's adjacent to it, and the Fallen Heroes Memorial were identified as Phase 1. Phase 2 was renovations to the ball field bleachers and the building, the sort of rooms underneath, new gateways primarily off Fifth Avenue and Ninth Avenue, and Laurel and some other support facilities. Next slide. Phase 3 was a big rotary picnic pavilion. The reason it's called the Rotary Pavilion is because the rotary picnic area that's currently in the park would be sort of relocated to that area. That's where the tennis courts ultimately would reside. Another restroom, more storage, removal of the rec center building, which was a big, one of the big foundational sort of features of the master plan, and a remodel of the parking garage and pushing it lower so that we could cap it and have an at-grade plaza. And then Phase 4, to round out the vision, was the new plaza with a new event building adjacent to it. And that's primarily the four phases. Next slide. So that was adopted by council in 2018. Then the next phase we embarked on was the playground. It was always earmarked as one of the earlier phases because of the condition it was in. It's really seen better days. It's been love to death. There's still some old sort of metal monkey bars and stuff that you just don't see anywhere anymore, so it was time. We, because so much time had passed since the original outreach we did, we started again because there's a whole new generation of families that had a lot of interest. So we did all sorts of activities. You can see we went out to the park and commandeered people as they walked by, advertised heavily through the social media avenues. We did online surveys. We did, we went to school pods. We did virtual efforts, so it was very, very extensive. And we finally developed a preferred design, which you're probably familiar with, but if you're not, I'll just briefly explain. The theme was Adventure Village. What we presented two sort of architectural stylistic concepts to the community. One was more, had an emphasis on the history of the park, going back to the coal estate. And the second one that was heavily preferred was what you see in front of you, which was Adventure Village, which really aimed to engage with the urban forest that exists in the park. So you could see these kind of fantastical treehouse structures, elevated walkways that get you up into the tree canopy, and lots of imaginative play in sort of in the forest. I don't know, I'm not going to walk you through the, all the design elements, but I will say that this playground represents something that's quite spectacular. It's a flagship facility. Every step of the way, when we talked to the community and commissions and other interested stakeholders, there was a sort of a keen interest to elevate this park in keeping with its stature of the overall park. So I think what we've accomplished with all this input is something that's quite magical and special and memorable and something deserving of the community of San Mateo. So that's kind of, that brings us up to today. I'm going to hand the mic off to King in a second, and he's going to talk a little bit about the cost ramifications, excuse me, and next steps. So King, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Leif. Hi, everybody. So the playground current status, as Leif had mentioned, it's been love to death. It's outlived its anticipated life cycle. Typically, it's 15 years. It's gone longer than that. With that age of the structure, we're finding that parts are hard to get. If you do find them, they're very expensive because they're not readily available. Currently, the playground does not meet industry standards as well as in design or in maintenance. And because it's so old and we're anticipating the next phase of this project, some of the maintenance activities have been withheld so we can put as much of the funds into the new project construction. So, next slide, please. In anticipation of the construction design, the construction documents have been completed. We have pre-qualified five bidders. And the bidders that are pre-qualified all have past project experience constructing playgrounds of this type comparable to our scope of work, project scope of work, the size of the projects, and the dollar amount. So we're talking about projects that are in excess of 9, 10 million, some up to like even 15 million. So we have these pre-bidders, pre-qualified bidders standing in the wings. The 100% cost construction document estimate has stayed substantially the same since the plans were developed at a 75% completion, around 10 million. At 75%, at 95%, and now at 100%, the costs varied less than $1 million. So that's something to say about RRM's design construction document capabilities, that they've been able to prepare plans that are clear and consistent for the cost estimator to arrive at very similar costs for, you know, during the construction documentation phase. Currently, the 100% plans are in to CDD to, for permit review, and we hopefully will get through that process shortly. Next slide, please. Now, there may have been some talk about cost escalation over the years because we have been going through some pretty unique construction industry cost changes. One of the things that we try to do is identify an existing project similar to Central Park Playground. And the one that jumps out, jumped out is the Magical Bridge Playground in River City. There's a few things that are very striking to take note of. One, it's about the same size. It's small. Magical Bridge was one acre. Ours is 1.7 acres. When it was constructed in 2021, it was $7 million. And if we escalated it up to 2025, we project it's $9.3 million in construction costs. So we broke it down into something that it might be easier for us to understand, cost per square foot. Back in 2021, it was $161 per square foot. And in 2025, we're projecting it's going to be $214 per square foot. Our prices for Central Park Playground is running below those numbers. So I think we're, you know, good in that respect. I mean, the number is still large, but it's not overboard or an anomaly. Next slide, please. Park and lieu fees and impact fees. I'm going to shift this over to Nicholas, my associate.
Thank you, King. Good evening. My name is Nicholas, and I'll speak to the park and lieu and impact fees and the funding component of this project. First of all, historically, capital improvement projects such as park renovations are funded through the collection of impact fees, which are codified in Municipal Code Section 1305070, Park Impact Fee. Park and lieu fees, ILFs, again, also codified. And last but not least, the park and recreation tax. On hand, our balance at the moment is $12.2 million. Sorry. So that's the funding source. On hand, currently, we have a balance of $12.2 million. The challenge with these fees is that they're unreliable in the sense that they ebb and flow year on year depending on economic activity and the value of housing in San Mateo. So it's a little bit hard to forecast accurately what is going to come in every year, hence why we say they're unreliable. In the last three years, we've collected $4.5 million, but our forecasts have been revised every year because of the fact that although we expect a number, a different number comes in. So although the number of 4.5 million may sound significant, in actual fact, it's wildly different to what we expect on an annual basis. Currently, we have pending projects that should bring in $7.4 million, and that will go towards this fund and this fund balance in order to fund all the additional, this project and additional projects that we have. The, anticipating the need for major funding to implement the Central Park Master Plans, funds have been added to the project, 610027 as it is known internally, over the past nine years. Presently, the balance sits at $9,936,678. And most recent cost estimates for the construction phase of the project included, including hard costs of $10.75 million with a 15% contingency. In saying that, as you can see, the playground balance for the project is 9.3, so we've got 12.2 available. 9.3 is allocated towards this project. The total project costs, 13.4 million. And then operating and maintenance costs have been estimated at approximately $350,000 annually. Okay. In the five-year capital improvement plan, we have $23 million in park renovation projects and 25, 26 forecasts, which will draw on this funding source. The overwhelming need for park improvements will far exceed the capacity of park and lieu and impact fees to fund the projects, and it will be necessary to find additional funding sources such as the general fund, measure rest, or a voter-approved revenue. Once again, we have $23 million in park improvements, and as I mentioned earlier, we only have 12.2 available with 7.4 on the horizon. So our needs exceed what we have available. So therefore, this is a future consideration that has to be tabled at the next capital improvement study session. And I will hand it back to King now.
So our timeline for the next steps. Sorry. Our timeline is to secure the building permit this spring, move forward to the bid phase, spring, summer 2024, and that'll take approximately two months minimum. Hopefully, we'll get good bids with a responsible contractor. We will bring that forward to council summer of 2024 for contract award. And soon thereafter is groundbreaking.
That concludes our presentation. We're happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Who would like to start the questioning period? Councilmember Hedges?
I think it's a really important project to get started on. I'm concerned, though, that we may not have enough money to complete it. What do you think? Anybody? Anybody that knows?
I'll take that. Yes, so that's something that we'll come forward with at the CIP study session to kind of look at all the different projects that we have and different scenarios of funding sources that we can address. But in the next two years, it seems like, you know, we may get enough money to do this project specifically, but we may have to make some choices about what we put on hold or negotiate going forward.
Yeah, that's what I got from the, from the report we had. Looks like we're about 4.1 short. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes, thank you, through the mayor. Could, has staff yet determined what would be considered maybe the core, main part of the project and what might be the sort of alternate additions that would be considered for overall cost reduction?
We have considered those options. The strategy during the bid phase is to have bid alternates incorporated into the bid documents. There will be a base bid, and then there's bid alternates that we can select from to manage the overall cost of the project. You can subtract or add these bid alternates. This is a strategy that RRM has used on previous playground construction projects of this type, and they have found it a very effective process to use. And just know that regardless of what the bid alternates are, the, the city is not obligated to enter into any contract. Even if the numbers were good, if the city chooses not to go forward, then we don't accept bids. And we proceed with the direction from council from that point.
Thank you. I guess, would council be able to see what any of the bid alternates are? I guess I'm curious to get a sense of like what might be, you know, what are we envisioning at this point as being like the most important parts of Phase 1?
I think we should turn this over to Leif to provide information, and we have a document to share.
Yeah, does someone have that graphic?
Yes, we're pulling it up right now.
Thanks for the question, Councilmember Lorraine. We have looked at this. It's going to require some more fine thought, but generally speaking, there's a few what we would consider low-hanging fruit that don't add play value but add general richness to the experience for users. So this is just a diagrammatic representation of some of those views. I'm just seeing a list of words. Can anyone see the plan?
I think so.
We see cost reduction strategies.
I'm sorry, something's not showing on Zoom, so we need to take a moment to fix it so our remote attendees can actually see the picture also.
There we go. Whoop. Disappeared again.
Patrice, I can't see Emma, so I don't know when her hand is raised.
Okay, are we ready?
Sorry, Leif, it's on Zoom, but now it's not presenting on the chamber. So one more, one more, third time's the charm. Here we go.
Okay.
I thought somebody was going to say it was very active. It's a very active design. Okay, we've got it.
I can start speaking to this as we're trying to pull up the graphic, but there are basically six different areas that we've tried to strategize around cost reduction. The first is a very large area, removing the two-to-five play area. The second area is to remove the central gathering area and group picnic shelter. The third is to remove the zip line and reduce the swing area. The fourth is to reduce the boardwalk. The fifth is to remove the extra picnic area, and the sixth is to remove the perimeter fencing. Go ahead, Leif.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, that was, that was a good summary. The first, really the first thing we do is we look for sort of discrete areas that could be removed without having a ripple effect throughout the rest of it. So you see these, these colored shapes, they are areas that we can focus on. The blue and the yellow, what I alluded to earlier, are picnic areas that are sort of support amenities for the playground itself. So you could remove a picnic shelter and picnic tables and things like that. The play value would remain the same for the, for the children in the playground, but you wouldn't have that support facility for birthday party rentals and things like that. So that, that's the blue and the yellow. The pink is the tiny kids' area, the two-to-fives. It's quite a large area and the, one of the basic facts of cost reductions is you have to shrink the footprint to make real significant inroads into the overall cost. So we looked at that as being an area that could be removed or, or built later, could be phased, and we could provide some more modest opportunities for the little kids elsewhere at a much more low price point. The, the brown, the number three at the bottom, that's, that's removing some amenities. So it's, it's removing a zip line, which was quite a, quite a popular item from the public, but we, we actually added it at one point as a result of public comment. But takes up some space and it, and we could take some swings out. So take, take a few amenities out and shrink the footprint that way. We could, we could look at ways to economize on the magnitude of the boardwalk that's up in the trees. That's the purple, number four. That's kind of elevated decks where we imagine would be really fun for kids and caregivers to stand and look at what's going on below. And then the other things, oh, the fence, that was the other thing. That, this was a topic of much conversation during the, during the process of should the playground be fenced? Many playgrounds are not, but we opted to add a fence due to a lot of input we received from caregivers that were concerned about other activities in the park and El Camino, sort of if you have a runner, a kid that's a runner, it's, it's, it's a nice little safety net to have a, have a fence there. But that's a, that's a big, that's a big line item, so that may be something to reevaluate with staff. And then the other things was some, some material selections, which we've, we've included some higher-cost materials with a view of saving costs downstream in maintenance. So things like the surfacing materials, you know, the, the premium sort of rubberized soft fall and synthetic grass soft fall in lieu of sort of the wood chips that you may be familiar with, which huge upfront cost differential, but the wood chips need daily maintenance. So, so the return on investment would be down, down the road for that sort of thing. So that's, that's some of the ideas we've had.
Thank you very much.
Are you finished, Councilmember?
Well, I'd be happy to defer to other councilmembers of questions. I have one other, hopefully, quick question about the, the Bianchi train, and I was just curious, I, it's my understanding that maybe how that plays into what we're looking at in this area may be different now than earlier when we last had a, a change to this master plan. So is that correct? And if so, how might this change as a result?
Yeah, nothing's happening to the train. The train is coming back as soon as possible. Our intention, because there will be considerable construction and closure of the central area of the park for this project, for bringing big trucks in and out, we have decided to defer bringing on a train, doing an RFP for the train, just to ensure that the success of the train operator. So we were trying to align going out for RFP for the train prior to the grand opening of the park where the kids will be and to ensure the success of the train operator.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Just one second, Councilmember Hedges. Councilmember Lee, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you so much. I was curious to hear from our experts. You know, one of, there are a couple of words you used to describe this vision, one being a flagship design. You mentioned that, that this, that the concept is magical and very special. And I, and I think it's hard to see, see that vision in these like very two-dimensional sketches. And so I, I wanted to kind of, as somebody who's been in this process, I was on the Parks and Rec Commission, I was on the, you know, I've been involved in parks for, you know, in the city for many years now. I was hoping, you know, if you could just highlight for us exactly, you know, what makes this project a flagship project from your perspective with a wide lens on, you know, why, you know, in terms of your, your exposure to parks all over, you know, the state potentially, and, and why, you know, why, why is it magical? And, and what, what was, what was expressed in terms of the community's desire? If you don't mind just helping elaborate on, on that, because I don't feel like it's telegraphing to me through, through these graphics right now.
Wow, you're putting me on the spot. But I'm happy to try. I think, I think the first thing that stands out about this design is it's, it's really, we've, it's, we've created a, a play environment. It's not, it's not just a collection of pieces of equipment. Like, that would be the, that would be like the standard playground that you go to. It's, it's, it's an area with things spaced out in it that you run from one to the other. This truly is a play environment, so that the site construction itself is part of the experience. You've got, you've got changes in terrain. You've got different experiences that users can have. They can get up kind of into the canopy, they can get underneath and above and, and slide up and down and scramble. So so many different, so many different sensory experiences. The way it weaves in and out of the trees, you know, not the least of which, the two-to-five year, year area. It's a little pathway with little hidden treasures that, that kids can find and explore. So it's, there's a real emphasis on imaginative play and not just directed play, which is a standard play structure. And it's very unique. A lot of the, a lot of the equipment is stuff you don't, you, this will be unique to the whole Bay Area. You know, there's the character of it, it's very whimsical. It's, there's, there's multiple different environments you can get into and around and up and down. It's accessible. You can get up to the, up to the top of the mound if you're differently abled, which is really a strong feature of it. And it's, it's, it's just a huge variety of different spaces. So I, I think, you know, we, we did design a lot of playgrounds around, around the state, actually, and, and this is definitely one of the most unique designs that we've, we've had the pleasure of working on. And it's, it's all thanks to the site that it's in, really. It's, you know, you've got this magnificent, mature tree canopy that the playground kind of engages with. It goes in and out and up and down and natural materials, textures, forms. It's, it's just got, it's got it all.
Thank you. I think that's really helpful to hear you, your, your take on it and, and be, to be explicit about what makes this design really special and unique to San Mateo and potentially a marquee investment for their city. So, you know, having, being a mom, it wasn't that long ago I was chasing after a two-year-old and also served on the Parks and Rec Commission. You know, my ears kind of perked up when you said you were thinking about, you know, one of the, one of the potential areas of removing would be the area for the two-to-five-year-olds. And so, you know, the whole purpose of this, this effort, and I know we're not at this point where we're talking about what's on the chopping block and what's not, right? That's not the decision point that we're making, we're at right now. But, but it's concerning as, it's concerning to hear something like that, especially being, being a mom myself and having run after my kid and, you know, the, the worst-case nightmare scenario of them running in the directions of El Camino, right? And the need to have designated safe contained places for young children that are separate and need to be separated from older children. And so, you know, I'm curious to hear in your, kind of in your analysis and your thinking, is there a through line? Is there a principle or core understanding that this will be, this will be a playground that serves all children, right? And especially our younger children that are toddlers and, you know, and preschoolers. So how, I, I, I want to, I'm seeking some reassurance from you because I think that that's, you know, it's, it can be very alarming for a community here or something like that. And, and wonder like, why are we making a $10 million investment potentially in a playground that won't serve my two-to-five-year-old, right? So I don't want the public to walk away with that misunderstanding. So I wanted to give you an opportunity to clarify.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think ultimately, it, it, it's, we get into a prioritizing discussion, which the council ultimately will have to, to look into. We, we're not advocating to remove anything. I, I think part of what King articulated earlier was our, our strategy in putting the entire playground out to bid and getting real numbers before we start having to make these decisions is very important because the distinction between an estimate and an actual bid, I need to stress that part, estimates can be, just can be off, off the mark. So we, we want to make sure we have a real understanding of how much these are all going to cost before the chopping block comes along, to use your words. If, if that was deemed on balance, something that we wanted to scale back on, we would go back and find other opportunities to, to re-weave some of that experience in for the little kids in the, in the rest of the playground. So we wouldn't just disregard an entire age group. We would, we would look for, look to, to balance it with what, what areas went, went forward. It is our experience that children of that age group graduate out of that type of playground quite quickly. I, I, I have kids, although they're, they're well beyond this age now, but they're always looking ahead, you know, at what the bigger kids are doing. So this in, in playgrounds we've designed, this is quite a, quite a large two-to-five area relative to what other playgrounds have, and you've probably experienced that yourself. It's, the two-to-five areas are generally quite small because kids can't wait. They're jumping out of their skins to go on the big stuff, running away from their parents. So, you know, we would look for, we'd look to balance it. We wouldn't just disregard it altogether. And ultimately, it'll be just a priority decision, you know, is, is the downside worth the upside?
Thank you. And my last question is, as I noticed, one of the, one of the slides was mentioning the, the, the cost of operating and maintenance for the playground itself. And I just wanted to better understand, would that be as, as a significant increase in ongoing costs for maintenance from what is there now? Or are we essentially throwing good money after bad because our equipment right now is so old and, and so, you know, so beyond its expiration date? Would our, is our, you know, I'm just kind of, it would help to have a little bit of comparison perspective or sort of a counterpoint in terms of what, what, how to understand that number?
I'll defer to staff for that one.
Yeah, I can take that, actually. Thank you for the question. I would say that this would need a significant increase in staffing response just because of the level of, you know, upkeep, trash, response like that. Our $350,000 estimate is above and beyond what we currently have budgeted for our playground maintenance for the entire city. We also added Burrell Park into our park catalog, and we have not additionally staffed for that specifically. So I think, you know, whenever you're having new parks and new equipment, you have to think about those things. The other aspect is as time goes by, the cost for maintenance will increase as, you know, the age of the equipment gets further down the line. Usually, you don't see too much in the way of replacement costs at the beginning, but as time goes on, slides wear and things need to be replaced as the age of the equipment goes on.
Certainly. And I think we're, we're underway with an effort to look at lifecycle facilities and budget accordingly and factor that into our, our CIP planning. So thank you for that. Those were my questions for now.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Newsom, do you have any questions?
No, Madam Mayor, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, and I think Councilmember Hedges had another one.
You had actually said something during your presentation that after I had asked my first question, I want to ask it about the fence. So enlighten me on the purpose of the fence. Is it for safety or is it just to define the area?
Go ahead, go ahead, Leif.
It's, it's, it's primarily for, for, you know, to provide a barrier for kids who, who might be wanting to sort of run away. So it's for their caregivers' peace of mind and safety more so than definition of the area.
And I believe that you had said, correct me if I'm wrong, that this is really a, a pretty large expense?
Yeah, it's, you know, we've taken a preliminary look at it and it's, it could be in excess of $300,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay, Deputy Mayor Newsom.
All right. I wasn't going to say anything, but now I'm going to. Just to touch on what Councilmember Hedges was suggesting, and a question kind of more open would be, if we forego putting up fencing around the entire perimeter, could we at least look at, at having additional fencing on the, you know, areas where they'd have close access, for example, to the El Camino Real? That would be, I guess it's not a question, it's more a suggestion would be, if it comes to that, could we look at that as an alternative as well, which would be just partially fencing to give another perimeter between that and, and traffic, high-traffic areas like the El Camino Real?
Yeah, I guess we would look at the bids as they came in and evaluate them based on the numbers that are provided. So yes.
Great. I will try and ask a couple quickly. So I, I'm assuming, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that when we get the bids, they will they will in, assume that there will be future cost increases because this won't be built overnight, whatever it is. And we can sort of throw that in as well as when we're evaluating it, the cost of future maintenance to accommodate the, the, the future maintenance costs that we will have. So that we are making a decision, as I think the director mentioned, on as many hard-wreath numbers as we possibly can, rather than what-ifs. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes, we're always reassessing the cost of doing business and incorporating that into the budget process.
Great, thank you very much. And then when you come back, I, I think this is a very smart approach, by the way, to, I mean, number one, I think it's a gorgeous, uh, design, and I would love to say, yes, absolutely, but I think it's a very smart way of going out to bid. Obviously, um, there's a lot of experience with it. And when you come back with the bids, um, are you planning on also sharing other parks and rec opportunities? Since we're not just looking at what we do with this park, but also how does it fit in with all the other park opportunities we have in the city?
So I would say when this comes back to council for contract award, you would evaluate it based on the merit of the bid before you for this park. Um, I think what we're getting into is a conversation about the capital improvement projects that are, um, citywide, um, for parks and recreation, and that needs to be a bigger discussion, um, that will be before you probably in April or May.
Great, thank you. And this might be a, a question, I think it's for the city manager, and this also may be a, a CIP question, but it's been mentioned both in the, in the documentation as well as tonight, that, you know, looking at additional funding sources, that Measure S could be one of those sources. Now, that source is going to be primarily used for streets, at least through 2025, uh, and then maybe, is it, do you know now, would it be feasible to look at that, or is that something you'd have to take a look at?
So regarding Measure S, we were just having a conversation earlier today. We're, we'll be coming back and looking at about, we actually have a Measure S committee meeting on Thursday, uh, just really talking about a $2 million line item to talk about city facilities, specifically for this park project. Might get a piece of it, we don't know for certain, but we're looking at, um, city facilities overall. Another area that we would look at is grants as well, so we're already working with our, uh, federal legislative consultant, um, as the state, or not state, the, the senators have a call for projects right now, so we'll be looking at this project. I have a meeting actually with our Parks and Rec Director, I think, next week to talk about that a little bit further. And so we'll, we'll look, uh, every which way to figure out how we can get more funding, but there's a lot more needs as we've laid out in the overall staff report, uh, throughout the city. And so that'll be a conversation that we'll have in, I believe, the April or May timeframe, uh, talking about the CIP and our parks projects as well. But there's definitely a big need for funding for parks throughout the city of San Mateo.
Absolutely, thank you very much. Those are my questions. So now, uh, let me go to public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one public comment to, for in-person. If you are on the Zoom call and you wish to make, offer public comment, if you could please go ahead and raise your hand at this time. So Nicholas, can you take that down?
That's me. Sorry, that's me.
No, this. Um, so if we could, we have three hands raised remotely, and our first speaker here will be Sheila Canzian. Sheila, please feel free to come up.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, Sheila Canzian. Although I am a member of the Library Board of Trustees, I am speaking on my own behalf. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Thank you for staff's presentation. Um, I really do support staff recommendations in terms of the, the process going forward with one caveat, that in addition to looking for opportunities to save money, that those are really considered in light of maintaining the integrity of the original design and the functionality of the playground, as it was approved by a previous council, as well as the public. I think that there are always opportunities for cost savings. I don't know that we've ever done a park project where we haven't had bid alternatives or, um, value engineering after it comes in, so I am very much in supportive of that. But I think you've already heard from many of the, the folks here tonight that we went through a very arduous public process about the master plan, and really in particular this playground. Um, and so I get a little concerned, as I believe Councilmember Lee did, when I heard some of the options for reduction in terms of potentially downsizing or removing a play area for two to five-year-olds, you know, removing, um, a fence, which was very supportive by members of the public, or even things like a, a picnic structure, which again, we heard that when families come down, they would like a place to be able to have their family come and enjoy the park as well as the playground. So I'm all for the opportunity to go out and look at the bid alternatives with the option of, um, potentially reducing costs, but also ensuring that the integrity of the original design, both in its functionality and its aesthetics, are trying as protected as much as we can. I think when we were talking about the Central Park process and the flagship, I think there is no doubt that, as many have called Central Park the jewel of the city, um, in terms of our, um, of our, our park system. To me, this is no different than the investment that the city has made in large capital improvement projects, whether they be street improvements or the clean water program. This is really an amenity for this community. I know that there was an op- there was a discussion about other comparisons. I just want to draw a comparison that we did at Beresford Playground, which I know many of you have seen. It's another standout community playground. That was built in 2016 at a cost of $2.3 million. It's about a third of the size of Central Park, and it did not include any buildings. So if we were to consider that 2.3 million for, um, the Beresford Playground back in 2016 to what it is today, then I, hopefully you understand that $10 million might sound like a lot, but I think in reality, this community is going to get a lot. So thank you for the time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll go to our remote speakers. The first speaker is Lena Lee. Lena, please go ahead.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, everybody. So, uh, my name is Lena, and I'm a mother of two. I'm a, a resident in District One of San Mateo. So when I first moved to San Mateo seven years ago, and I became a stay-at-home mom, so I pretty much went to Central Park every single day, like, the majority of my time was spent in that park. So year goes by, then my children, like, became toddlers, and the Central Park just remained the same. And we were very excited to see the master plan being released out, and my kids were so passionately, and they even, like, went to the park, participated the voting, and we were waiting for the further step of this park to be upgraded, you know, sooner to meet the standard of the city, you know, as the representative of this, like, city landscape. Um, but then, just year goes by, and there's never a, a new update. So me, as a new mom who resident in this city, representing all the other parents in San Mateo, um, who have young children, and we often ask this question when we gather together, is just when this park will be updated? Because it's been so many years, and there's never a exact date that we know this thing will happen, and we have been waiting for so long. Now, my first child is seven years ago, and he, he goes to elementary school. And the park not mentioned stays the same, it actually got worse. And every single day we go there, we just felt like, why? And the second of all, um, as a mom, because we pretty much travel a lot, and we go to every city, we always go to the local playground. So I have been to pretty much like hundreds of playgrounds in my whole entire life, and every playground, when I visited in Europe, they always have this restaurant, cafe, in the two minutes walking distance from the playground, which benefits the, the parents so much. And I was just thinking why this whole design at the first beginning didn't bring the stakeholder, um, as parent group, to participate of this process, to give perspective and insights, to let the designer know what actually, what kind of playground actually benefits the parents the most. And I just have these two points to lay out for tonight, and as young family and, um, parents, and we really want to urge the city to finish upgrading this park because it shouldn't be like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex. Please go ahead, Alex.
Uh, thank you, Council. Uh, I, as a San Mateo resident, I currently do not have children, but I would not be able to afford them if I wanted to. So I guess my concern primarily is with the costs, uh, and if there is sort of maybe a modular way to add things as they go, maybe pick the, the most important things, like the two to five area or whatever the, it seems like there's, it's in sections, uh, and then to also keep maintenance in mind and such, uh, just so that if money's going to be spent, it could also be spent in areas that allow more people to raise kids in San Mateo. Uh, and, uh, on top of that, it maybe if, it could be done more modularly so that it could be done quicker, or it could be done in stages in a way that it's not, uh, just an empty construction area or an under-construction area for an extended period of time, sort of like how Block 21, uh, just became, uh, a completely desolate block recently, uh, rather than businesses. Um, so yeah, I guess I'm all for new playground, but definitely also for reducing the overall costs, not just out of necessity, but out of, uh, management.
Thank you, Alex. Our next speaker is Andrew Reback. Please go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you. This is Andrew Reback. I live in the North Central Neighborhood. Um, thankfully, the mother who spoke, uh, captured many of my thoughts, so I will be, uh, concise in my thoughts. You know, when I first moved here, I thought there was a, a failure in vision by the Parks Department. Since living here about 11 years, I've realized we have an amazing Parks Department, and in fact, it's a failure of funding. And so we need to move past that and figure out whether we, how we get sustainable revenue. Um, I'm happy to support bond measures or whatever else is necessary. Mayor, previous Mayor, uh, Emma Lee has heard me speak with her. I'm like, look, we're always paying for police and fire and storm drains and sewer, and we're missing, you know, what makes cities amazing, and that is our parks, rec centers, pools. Um, I'm not suggesting a bond measure for Central Park alone, but even after we've completed that, we still have no great swimming facilities, we have other parks that need to be funded. Our revenue should be grown to support the ongoing maintenance, but I'd love to see a capital program investment in our parks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker is Matilda. Please go ahead.
Hi, um, we're a family in San Mateo with four kids, one in a, a wheelchair, and we know many other families with children in wheelchairs. I'd like to urge you, when considering any cost-cutting alternatives possibly down the line, to, uh, try to retain as much accessibility as you can. Our closest parks are Central Park, Beresford, and Burrell, none of which are wheelchair-accessible fully. I mean, there's a lot of woodchips, woodchips don't go well with wheelchairs, so, um, please keep that in mind if, if this is to be a, kind of flagship park for everybody in the city, that, um, everyone truly can use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that's our last remote speaker. Uh, is there anyone else in the council chamber who wanted to address this? Okay, thank you very much. We're done with public comment.
All right, then I will close public comment, bring it back to council for com- comment here. Who would like to begin?
I'll begin.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
Well, um, as, as the public was speaking, um, it was, it's so heartening, uh, to hear how, you know, how much we, we care about our parks, and one of the mottos we have for our Parks and Rec Department is Parks Make Life Better. And, um, and it's, it's wonderful to hear our community come out and speak on behalf of our parks, and especially, um, uh, our, you know, our former director of Parks and Rec, um, Sheila. I'm, I'm personally very aligned with, um, with the goal of maintaining the integrity of the vision. Of course, we have to do our, um, our value engineering and, you know, and weigh trade-offs, but I think that, um, I think taking a long view in these investments is really important. Um, as, um, as our previous director was talking about, you know, the cost of Beresford, right? Um, in, you know, in the 2000, you know, what was it, 2016? And how, I was going back even further, um, and, you know, pop quiz for anyone who's there at the 100th, um, our, our Central Park, you know, 16-acre Central Park, does anyone remember in 1922, um, how much we paid for that? Pop quiz. I'll give you a cookie and a gold star if you can get it. Okay?
I think you know.
It was 80,000. So in today's dollars, um, 80,000 is 1.5 million, just under 1.5 million. So that is to say that, um, that the investments we make, um, now actually pay off, and that the cost of waiting goes up significantly. And it's not just the cost, um, of, you know, the cost of having a less-than amenity, less than what our community deserves, our community desires. It's also the, um, the significant cost, um, in the loss of trust for communities that go for years and decades and watch their kids, um, get born and grow up and never have the park that was promised. Um, this is, you know, I, I participated in the second round of master planning for, um, for our Parks and Rec Department, because the first round of master planning never was fully realized and funded and became stale, right? And so the frustration that, that community members have on the visioning process that we go through, that we invest in, and then does not come to fruition, that in itself has a cost. It's a, it's a cost of lack of, loss of trust in government. And then what, what I think, um, you know, I think at the heart of this is, you know, is the need to invest. And we're at a crossroads where we can make decisions about the investments that we make today, and then also the need to step forward and, um, and provide ongoing funding, um, and, and significant more, significantly more funding through things like, um, you know, bonds. And, um, and, you know, I think, was it last year or two years ago? I'm losing track now. Uh, one of my council priorities was, um, was putting forward a, um, a bond measure to support our Parks and Rec, um, our park and rec facilities, and also layering on top of that, the need to have, um, to have more investment in our climate resiliency. And knowing that our, our facilities will have multi-purposes, not just as the, you know, standard community amenities like playgrounds, but our, you know, our community centers will also be our cooling stations, right, on those hot days. There'll be our shelters. So, uh, you know, I really do see, um, you know, I see us moving forward in a direction where we can start opening, we can start opening up those conversations about future funding opportunities, and I look forward to, um, to doing some, some work and having some, some important conversations about how to fully realize this vision and deliver on the promise to our community.
Thank you. Who would like to be next? Councilmember Hedges.
Yes, thank you. I really agree with, uh, Ms. Lee's, uh, ideas about the park. I think she's right on. I think the park's very important. I certainly would not like to see the two-to-five-year-old section removed. Those are our kids that we're just bringing into this. I know from my own chil- grandchildren, I have them here, when we go to the parks, uh, once they see the play equipment, it's all over with. It's a dead run. And, uh, so I know how much they enjoy it. So along with that, from my experience, that if you have play equipment, especially for smaller children, you need to have a restroom nearby. So a parent with, with more than one child is not going to be able to grab that child and run all the way across to Fifth Street, uh, to the bathroom and leave the other children behind. So that's, that's an imperative. Once we have this playground, we need to have a restroom pretty near with changing tables. And, uh, I know as a young boy, little boy myself, and I know having, having grandchildren and great-grandchildren- And I know as a young boy, little boy myself, and I know having grandchildren and great-grandchildren, that especially little boys play, until it's an emergency, you have to move pretty fast with them. And so there are some things that I think we can work with. I really don't see an extreme need for a fence, and if it's over $300,000 or more, and if it's not for safety, the playground itself is going to outline that it's there, and the kids will not have any trouble finding it. So I think that we could possibly remove that fence and save at least a chunk of money where we can do other work with it, because it's not integral to the playground, as I see it. Others may have a different opinion, that's where I said it this time. So that's it for now. Listening to my other council members, I may have some future remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you, through the mayor. I appreciate staff's presentation tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to revisit this, bring it back to the public, and to, you know, I'm excited at the opportunity to take some forward steps on this and finally bring a lot to perhaps all of what we've envisioned over the years to, you know, an extremely important park in our city. I am in support of the presentation and the proposal. I appreciate the comments that we've received from the public and Councilmember Lee's comments. They resonate with me. I agree that this is, of course, you know, the jewel of the city, and, you know, I appreciate that we have a number of bid alternates here. Nothing has been taken off the table at this time. We'll go forth, learn what we can, and have a more robust discussion in the not-too-distant future. And I look forward to that and to the results. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Thank you, through the mayor. I reiterate what all of my peers have said, support the full expanse of this park project, really want to see it done right. I do agree with Councilmember Hedges in that I don't know that fencing around the complete perimeter is important, but I do still stand with making sure that we have a secondary barrier between that and the El Camino Real entrance. My daughter, who's now 16, was a runner, and that was always the scary thing about having her in Central Park, was that she would just zip off and head towards traffic. So, you know, some of the older parks have like kind of a two-tier gate system where you have one gate, you go through the other. We still have that in Sunny Brae, on one side of Sunny Brae Park. And I think that that particular, you know, entrance, we should, if we do away with fencing perimeters, we should still try to maintain that. I don't want to remove any sections, especially the two-to-five-year-old section. I think having every section is important. I do want to make sure that we plan better, because the equipment in its current, the playground in its current form is just well beyond, you know, its life cycle. And it's a little bit, to me, as a newly-elected council member and now a year on the job, it's a little bit embarrassing. I know when we were at Concert in the Park this past summer, the Park and Rec staff had done a good job of trying to fix a part that was broken, and yet a panel fell off. And, you know, all of a sudden, we had to tape off and remove the kids from the play section entirely. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we continue to do a better job of making sure we look for maintenance and plan. You know, we talked about this a lot in our Blue Sky session, but planning to make sure that the park is never in a section or a point where we feel like, yeah, this is beyond the pale, we've let it go too far. And I'm committed as deputy mayor and council member to help whatever it can to raise funds, and whatever measure that needs to be that we need to get passed, we'll get it done. I'm also not opposed completely to being a corporate chill and trying to find corporate sponsors. I've seen that in some other cities now, where an area like a playground might have a corporate sponsor for a two-year period of time. So I think San Mateo is rich with potential sponsorship, and the kids don't care. It's just at the gate and parents laughing off, right? So whatever we can do to make this right, I'm in full support of, and I'm going to let it go at that. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, now that he's done the entire marketing campaign for the funding, I just want to thank staff very much, everyone, and I want to thank Leif as well, because you're really the one who has the collective memory, you know, for going back to the very beginning, and that's just so important. And I think that's important to think about going forward. And I think staff has really taken a very responsible way of approaching this, by showing us the full potential. And obviously, our former Parks and Rec Director, Kanzian, could go on as well, and you are also our collective memory, so thank you very much for being here. I think it's going to be very important to get data, to figure out what's the best way to do, because we are all supportive. We all want all of this to happen for all the various reasons. When we get real data, we need to see what we can do, make sure we have the maintenance costs, make sure we have costs, you know, increases involved. Look at options, look at options for funding. I mean, I think this is absolutely something that we all, as a community, want to come together for. But I think we have to do it in a very responsible way and be very clear-eyed about what those costs are going to be, and how do we make sure we're not just saying, it's going to be okay, it's going to be okay, it's going to be okay. We've been doing that for Parks and Rec for far too long. So I am excited about the opportunity and look forward to what you discover and to coming back. Thank you all very much, and to all your colleagues who have been involved in this as well. So with that, I believe we can adjourn until 7 o'clock.
Did you lose your ballot?
There's no gavel.
There's no gavel.